Hello and thank you so much for joining us. My name is Betsy Boja and I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson for the 2025-2026 year, and I'm very happy to be here with all of you. We'd like to start with our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is on the land and territories of indigenous peoples. Today, Arizona is home to 22 federally recognized tribes, with Tucson being home to the Tahanah Otham and the Pasquehaki people. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties at any level of government. We do, however, advocate for public policies such as voting rights, nondiscrimination, civil rights, reproductive rights, and criminal justice reform. We have been empowering voters and defending democracy in Greater Tucson for 84 years. Today, we invite all people, regardless of gender, gender identity, ability, ethnicity, or race, to join us as we commit to righting the wrongs of our past and building a stronger, more inclusive democracy for all of us. Thank you.
And I am Betsy number two. I'm your moderator for this evening, and I really, I want to thank you all for coming. It's great to see such a big crowd. Glad our candidates came, but we are missing Jesse Lugo, who had a minor health issue today and was not able to come. So we will proceed with the two candidates that we have. So I am also a member of the League of Women Voters, and I want to thank the Valencia Library for hosting us all tonight. And let's see, Betsy already covered the land acknowledgement, so I want to acknowledge the rest of our team. Our timekeeper is Sue Diarmin, and question sorters Linda McCabe and Linda Hefferman, and question collectors which are roaming around, Mary Davis and Janice Christ. And I just want to mention that I do not live within the city, so I will be not be voting in this primary or any of the ward primaries, and so I'm a neutral party. So the forum consists of asking questions to the candidates, your questions. We need your questions. So I know some people have already submitted them, and if you think of something along the way, you can raise your hand, and one of our roving question people will take your card or give you another one if you've already used yours up. So, yeah.
Would it be possible to ask a question ourselves?
No, no. All the questions come through our question sorters because we're trying to eliminate duplication and, you know, keep a variety of subjects going. So they're not screening them, but they're just sorting them for duplication. So I suggest, you know, write legibly one idea, one sentence per question, and also keep in mind that both candidates are going to be answering every question. So you don't want to direct them to a specific person just because they're going to cover all of them. And hopefully, we can get through them all, but we apologize if we run out of time and we don't get to yours. So our two candidates, starting closest to me, Selena Barajas and Chris Elsner. And by participating in this forum, they have agreed to abide by our rules, and we ask all of you guys to respect them as well. And so that includes, first and foremost, please maintain a civil, nonpartisan atmosphere. This is a forum, not a rally or a campaign event. So please do not clap, yell, cheer, boo, or create any noise, or hold up any signs during the forum. And if anyone can't abide by that, we will help ask them to leave, but hopefully that won't happen. Along the same lines, this is also not a debate, so we ask our candidates to respond directly to the question and not to what each other is saying or have done. So we want to hear what you guys think about the issues, not what you think about each other. And by drawing that contrast, you'll be able to compare the difference, or the audience will be able to compare the difference. Next, please mute your phones and put them away. Do not record or take pictures of any part of this forum. The League is live streaming. Hello, Facebook audience there. And it's also being recorded, so if you want to revisit any of it later, you can go to the League of Greater Tucson website and look for the YouTube library. Finally, the candidates will have an equal amount of time to answer each question. Sue will be holding up signs at 30 seconds and stop to tell the speaker how much time they have to respond, and if they run over, I will thank them and cut them off. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves in their platform, and then two minutes to respond to each question, and two minutes for concluding remarks at the end. And we're going to alternate back and forth who gets to or who has to go first. I don't know how you guys look at it, but we'll rotate back and forth. So with that, let's begin, and we'll start with opening remarks. I'm just going to start randomly with Selena because she's the closest to me. You have two minutes.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and giving you all, our community, the opportunity to hear directly from us your candidates. My name is Selena Barajas, and I'm running for Tucson City Council in Ward 5 because this is my home. This is where my story and my family's story began. It's where I believe our community deserves a bold leader who can make a real difference for the long haul. I am a proud fourth-generation Tucsonan, a mother, a small business owner, an urban planner, and a community organizer. I attended both Sunnyside and Tucson Unified Public Schools, the University of Arizona, and I have a master's degree from UCLA. My educational journey actually began down the street at Alvira Elementary School, where my mom taught for over 30 years with SUSD. The experiences I've had growing up in this community and working alongside many of you here in this room have shaped my deep commitment to public service. Throughout my career, I've worked to build stronger, healthier neighborhoods, whether that means advocating for safer streets, vibrant public parks, and supporting local businesses, protecting our environment, and ensuring that our families have safe and clean water, not just for today, but for future generations. I understand how policy affects people's everyday lives, and I believe city leadership must always, always center the voices of those most impacted. I'm running because I believe in a Tucson that's rooted in equity, guided by vision and driven by action. This isn't just about the next few years. It's about laying the foundation for our Ward 5 community for years to come. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm excited to see what we can create and build together, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Elsner. I'm a husband. I'm a father. I'm a returned Peace Corps volunteer. I'm a graduate of Northern Illinois University and the University of Arizona, and I currently work at U of A coordinating the Peace Corps prep program. I'm devoted to serving my community and the principles of servant leadership. I am a progressive, and I believe in ideas like shared governance, participatory budgeting, reforms to cash bail, income-based civil fines, and that government should be innovative and effective in serving the people. I think food, shelter, and healthcare should be human rights and not solely mechanisms for profit. But I'm also pragmatic, and I do not expect everyone to agree with me on those issues, and that's okay. But I think a lot of people these days are frustrated that politicians don't seem to be listening. Elected officials aren't hearing your voices. Government is not serving the people, and I too feel that frustration. That's one of the primary motivators for me running for Tucson City Council, and I can assure you that I am committed to listening to you, to representing the needs of the community, even if that doesn't necessarily align perfectly with my progressive values. Because at the end of the day, my goal is to work with the community to build a better future for all of Tucson's families, a future where we all have the opportunity to grow, to thrive, and to find meaning. And I hope that's something that we can all agree on here tonight. I appreciate the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson for putting together this forum. I look forward to answering your questions, and I appreciate the support and collegiality and friendship of my fellow candidates, and I wish Mr. Lugo good health and a speedy recovery for whatever is ailing him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So you guys have told us a bit about why you're running, so now we want to hear what are your unique strengths and why you think you will be the best city council representative for Ward 5. Chris will start reading this time.
Thank you. So I bring a variety of skill sets and experience and backgrounds to the table. So I have a master's of public administration from the University of Arizona focused on public and nonprofit management. So I understand at a pretty high level how government works, how nonprofit agencies work, how budgeting works, some of the nuts and bolts, kind of how the sausage is made with city government and government in general. I'm kind of a news junkie too, so I pay pretty close attention to local politics, local media, and just the news ecosystem, so I like to think that I'm pretty aware of what's going on. I'm pretty cognizant of the issues. We have a lot of great local media sources here in Tucson, and we're lucky to have them. But I also bring a variety of cultural perspectives. Serving in the Peace Corps, living in another country, I served in Ukraine from 2008 to 2010, really opens your eyes to being the other. You know, I have been in another country as the foreigner, not speaking the native language and trying to get by and navigate that situation for two years. So I understand and have empathy for the many refugees and immigrants and people that are from, you know, other places that come to our community and are trying to make a better life. I've lived in rural communities in northern Arizona and Pine Top Lakeside where I was born. I wasn't born in Tucson, but I am an Arizonan, so I understand the rural perspective and more, you know, different sides of the coin. I've lived in more conservative areas when I lived in Illinois during my high school years, and have been friends with a variety of people over the years. And as a result of all those experiences, I'm really committed to what I said about listening, to understanding or trying to understand other people's perspectives and trying to leverage my skills and experience to bring all of those perspectives, concerns, and needs to the table, so that at the end of the day, we're making decisions and doing what's best for all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Selena?
Yeah, I'm able to bring, you know, the deep roots that I've been able to establish here as a native Tucsonan, and also I've been doing the work here for many, many years, whether that's working with our current nonprofits, whether it's working with our local school districts, our local businesses. I've done a lot of community engagement around our Ward 5 neighborhoods and just Tucson in general, working directly with City of Tucson Department of Transportation and Mobility on several projects. But also, after getting my master's degree in urban planning from UCLA, I worked with the nonprofit sector in a jurisdiction, City of Santa Monica, and then I worked in the government sector, working in City of Inglewood at City Hall and doing a lot of community events, bringing folks together with the Parks and Recreation Department. And because of these deep roots, I've been able to cultivate and nourish and build these relationships, these existing relationships. And these are the relationships that I'm going to bring into this office here with Ward 5. I'm going to be able to bring folks that are already doing the work and also support, you know, ongoing initiatives that are in place right now.
Thank you, Selena. And sticking with you for now, if elected, what would be your first three priorities for Ward 5?
So there's a few priorities that I have, but for Ward 5, the three that I am focusing on, and while knocking on doors, you know, our team, we've already knocked on over, close to 5,000 doors here in our Ward 5 community in various neighborhoods. For y'all that don't know, our Ward 5 hasn't had anyone knock on doors in over 16-plus years. So when I'm listening to the community, I'm really, hopefully, reactivating our Ward 5 neighborhoods. And what I've been hearing the most are aligned with my priorities, which are addressing the unhoused homelessness and also providing more affordable housing opportunities, whether that's rent or providing families their first-time home to own. You know, Ward 5, we have the second-most homeownership in all six ward offices. So that tells me that there's a lot more elders living in these homes. So my priority is going to be to have these conversations with the current homeowners of having a plan of action of what are they going to do with that home, with that property, and how they're going to pass on that generational wealth to their family or somebody that wants to purchase a home in Ward 5 and reinvest. My second priority is around safer streets, you know, making sure that our roads are paved, that our residential streets have access to ample lighting, that our public transit is running smoothly, you know, and doing a lot of community work around transportation. I always say our streets are like our veins. If they're flowing and if they're healthy, then our sheets in our community is going to be healthy. And then my third priority is around environmental impact, around addressing clean water, air, and access to green space. You know, our Ward 5 neighborhoods are some of the hottest neighborhoods in all of the county. At some times, they are 15 degrees hotter than other areas of town. So I want to make sure that our areas have trees. Thank you.
And Chris, what are your top three priorities?
So it's really reflective of what I've heard from knocking on doors in the community as well. And unless you're in a neighborhood that's recently been repaved, roads and infrastructure are the number-one complaint that I hear from people in the community. And I think we have to do a better job with city government of being effective in how we maintain our infrastructure. So I think we need to look more closely at grants and procurement, how we're working with contractors, holding them accountable to make sure that they're getting the job done in a timely fashion, that they stand by their work, and that the roads don't fall apart a few years after that. Because I think there's also frustration from a lot of people in the community that we go to them frequently asking for, you know, increases in sales tax, pass this bond initiative, but then it's frustrating when they don't see, the residents don't see, the impact of those bond initiatives in their community in a timely fashion. And so we can't keep going back and asking for more and more funding when we're not demonstrating that we're effectively utilizing that funding. So I think we have to do a lot better in terms of how we manage our funds, how we manage our procurement, infrastructure, projects, contracting, and making sure that there aren't inefficiencies or, you know, roadblocks there for no reason. Homelessness is another big issue that is probably the number-two issue that comes up knocking on doors, and that is a major ongoing crisis for our community that is top of mind, and it has an impact in many of our day-to-day lives in our neighborhoods in one way or the other. And I think we hear from two different perspectives. There's some people that are just kind of fed up and want it to go away, but there's also people, I think, that have compassion with that. Not everyone is homeless for the same reason, and so we need to have nuanced approaches in how we're dealing with that. But I think as a city, we need to do a lot better job collaborating with folks in the community to address those concerns with the nonprofits so we can effectively work on that solution. And then my third priority is listening. I'm here to listen to you and your needs and concerns because I don't think politicians have been doing that, and I want to make an effort to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. And sticking with you, what is your position on whether the city should buy Tucson Electric Power and why?
I don't know if the timing for it right now is ideal, but my understanding from the study that the city put out is that it would make economic sense either for the city to buy out TEP and implement a public utility, or to go with the community aggregation. They're not necessarily mutually exclusive. The community aggregation is held up by, I think, either Arizona Corporation Commission or state legislature policies, so we couldn't necessarily implement that without a change at the state. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think TEP extracts a lot of revenue and resources from our community. If you don't know, TEP, through a series of conglomerates, is owned by a Canadian energy company. They have something like $400 million in revenues every year. And while it's great that TEP sponsors a lot of charities, they do a lot of good, they fund a lot of things in our community, every time I see that, I'm like, well, all of that revenue profit that they're able to donate into the community comes from the backs of the ratepayers of these residents of Tucson. And with the increasingly warm heating climate with, you know, climate change, heat is a health and safety concern. People die when it gets too hot and their air conditioner goes out, and that problem is not going to go away or get any better. And I don't know that TEP makes it affordable to run our air conditioners to keep our families safe, to keep our elders safe. I don't know that they have great policies in place for keeping electricity on at critical times of the year, and I don't think they've done a good job in incentivizing renewable energy. I'm still shocked, and was shocked when I moved down here in 2011, that why doesn't every house in Tucson have solar panels on the roof? It's like, well, TEP makes it kind of hard, makes it hard to, you know, do the economics for have solar panels. It would be a long, hard process, and TEP would fight it tooth and nail, and they would make it more expensive than it would otherwise be. And I don't know that the city's finances right now are available, but it's something I favor looking at over time.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. And Selena on TEP?
Yeah, this is an issue that requires a lot of reading, a lot of listening, a lot of sit-down conversations. You know, as somebody that really advocates a lot for clean energy in the work that I do and just in life, it is important for our Ward 5 community to be a part of these conversations. So first, I will say that we need to have a lot more education around clean energy and around how we could truly make our city as a whole a climate-resilient city. You know, we have this opportunity. However, there's just so much going on right now around TEP that we need to really sit down as a community, see how it's going to benefit us and our constituents, and also think about, you know, for the long haul. Because, you know, like Chris said, our summers, this is, somebody said this the other day, this is, we're entering the hottest summer, yet at the same time, this is your coolest, these are your coolest summer days that you're experiencing right now. So we can't deny that our electric bills are going to be sky-high. You know, it's for some families, it's a matter of either food or, you know, turning that AC on. And we got to be really cautious about the next steps around TEP, and we need to make sure that our community is fully aware of the long haul effects. You know, we need to look at the franchise agreement. I do think we need to revisit the time of that and not make it a 25-year revisit, but maybe five years. You know, that's going to be really important, and we need to just make sure to have these conversations addressed. We can't shy away because when I went to the town hall that was sponsored by the city of various town halls, there weren't a lot of people from our Ward 5 community, and that was brought up. So we need to spend more intentional time talking about these conversations to homeowners, renters, commercial property owners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next question back to Selena. What are your plans to support children and elder programs?
Well, you know, we live in a very multi-generational community. I see that here in this audience. Our Ward 5 community, especially on the south side, we're very multi-generational. We take care of each other. You know, the Nanas take care of our grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So I would, one other priority that I didn't mention is not, it's not being on my top three that I listed, but youth mentorship. You know, our youth, we have some resilient young adults here in our Ward 5 community that I want to be able for them to provide opportunities for them to engage with our elders, you know, our older folks. I'll say 40-plus years, you know, we're, I'm entering that elder zone for some of the youth in the room. And having more mentorship opportunities and working closely with our local school districts, Sunnyside and TUSD, working with our, you know, stakeholders, like our public libraries, our amazing nonprofits that we have, some that are in the room. We need to really work in collaboration, and I want to start a leadership, a young youth leadership program, because that's how I got started as a youth leader, going to Chicanos por la Causa youth conferences and listening to leaders like Lorraine Lee and our late congressman Raúl Grijalva, and, you know, I could go on and on with all the leaders that I've been exposed to as a youth, and that really helped pave the way of where I'm at today in my life, and I'm hoping to install that in the next generation. You know, as the first woman ever to run in Ward 5, there's never been a female ever to run in our Ward 5 community. I want our young women in the audience to see that there's somebody, a female, running because I remember seeing council member Steve Leal, you know, at Mexican restaurants and seeing him as our council man for many years, and now I'm ready for new leadership to take, to take place.
Okay. And Chris?
Yeah, as a member of the sandwich generation, I feel this with growing, you know, parents, grandparents, having young children. I have a six-year-old and nine-year-old. It's a struggle a lot of times because, you know, all of our folks so far are in good shape, but it's coming, you know, to the point where they may not be. And so we're going to be juggling probably in the next 10 years, having to take care of, you know, our kids and our parents at the same time, and that's going to be a major strain on our family. And I think in a lot of ways, our society has really failed our children and failed our elders. You know, we have some support structures with Social Security and Medicare for our elders, but we don't have a nationwide system for taking care of our kids. There isn't, you know, universal pre-K. We don't have paid childcare. You know, when I was working at U of A in 2019, I left for a couple of years because both of my kids were younger, they weren't school age, and my take-home salary at U of A was less than what it was going to cost to have both of my kids in all-day daycare. So I was a stay-at-home dad, and it kind of worked out. I had a startup company that didn't really pan out because the pandemic hit, and then the pandemic, you know, a lot of people were home with their kids anyway, so it wasn't, you know, the worst timing. But that was a struggle, and I think a lot of families face that, trying to find affordable childcare, trying to find good schools for your kids. It terrifies me that I don't know that my kids are going to have a better future or more opportunities than I had growing up, and I don't think that's fair. And so we need to do a much better job of supporting our kids. I think we can make some linkages supporting our elders. I think, you know, one hand can maybe help the other. Some of the, you know, older folks can maybe volunteer. I think we need to do a lot better job of building community because that is something I feel with a lot of my peers that has been lost, that we don't have those community intergenerational families, intergenerational support structures, because everyone is on their phone all the time, or everyone is working two or three jobs. We need to do better.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. And sticking with you, the City of Tucson will soon be voting on whether or not to annex an area on the southeast side for a cluster of 10 data centers. If you were on the council, how would you vote?
We need a lot more information about the data centers, and I'm kind of appalled that we would go into any kind of relationship with NDAs that prevent elected officials from knowing about what they're voting on or sharing with the public what they're voting on. Data centers suck up a ton of energy, a ton of water. There's lots of reports about local pollution, air pollution, noise pollution associated with that. They want to put it right next to Ward 5, so, you know, just stick it in Ward 5, they won't say anything, right? I don't know that I would support that, and I don't like that, you know, the city and county is always chasing, well, we're going to have a bunch of high-paying jobs coming into the area, but at what cost to the people that are already living there? So I'm not, probably not in favor of that. Definitely would want to know a lot more information. I'm also pretty skeptical of a lot of our big tech companies that, you know, have way too much control, way too much power at the state and federal level. They control too much of our media ecosystem, too much of our phones, too much of our data. There is very little regulation. We are rushing headlong into AI. I think one of the biggest mistakes our country has made over the past 20 years was not regulating social media, and we're about to jump into AI with having even fewer regulations, even more Wild West. And AI is going to profoundly change our lives in the coming years, hopefully for the good, but the way it's currently set up, the companies developing AI are not incentivized to produce AI products that are going to be good for you, our family, or our community. They are incentivized to capture your intention, to capture your engagement, and make money. And I don't trust that, and I don't know that I want that in our community or want to support it, regardless of how many jobs they create. I would much rather support local entrepreneurs and small businesses and foster our own economic development here in Tucson.
Thank you, Chris. And I just want to make a reminder, please do not take photos or make audio recordings. There is a recording that will be available, but please leave it at that. So Selena, sorry, back to you. On the data centers, would you vote for them or not?
Yeah, well, first, you know, how it was laid out is not transparent. You know, our community is always hesitant and reluctant to want to trust the government, and this kind of shows how it was laid out of the uneasiness around it. I wouldn't support something that is going to hurt our environment. You know, we already have a water crisis as it is. A local leader always shares that, you know, with the Colorado River. It's not if, it's when. So we got to really think about that when we're doing development. You know, something that I want to push for Ward 5 is sustainable development because these projects are not just for right now for us here in this room. It really is for the next seven generations, and we have to be mindful of every development that is taking place here in Tucson and the county and southern Arizona region. You know, there's a lot of issues that we could help mend before we think about doing this big development. And I don't even know how many jobs realistically it would create. You know, I haven't seen the, I've heard different numbers, but it's, it doesn't seem like it's the amount that they're proclaiming. So... So um, with any type of A I projects, we have to be very careful, especially like I stated earlier, our summers are not getting any cooler. And this is just gonna make our climate and our environment, um, you know, it's gonna worsen that, so. No, we have to really be cautious of our development and we have to be um, you know, able to be transparent with our community. Us, around these environmental impact development projects. Because um, historically, our Ward Five has seen the effects of that. And we are that frontline community that these projects directly impact.
Thank you. Um, and sticking with you, Selena, um, how do you plan to address displacement of families that will result from Norte Sur?
Yeah, as somebody that worked on Tucson Norte Sur for over two years, you know, I would highly uh, recommend that you read the executive summary, summary report. So Tucson Norte Sur was um, a policy recommendation plan from, starting from the Tucson Airport. Tapping into the three transit stations that we have here in town. Laos Transit here on the south side, Ronstadt downtown, and Tona to die by the Tucson Mall, connecting those transit stations. Instead of getting off the airplane or off Laos and wanting to go to the Tucson Mall, instead of taking four hours, four buses. It'll actually be one bus in about thirty to forty minutes, and that will result in Tucson Rapid Bus. A plan that might be in effect in the next fifteen, twenty years, depending on the, you know, current administration. Cuz a lot of our transportation projects are on pause. Um, but I did a lot of engagement around that, and that was a main concern, especially for the south side, you know, Twenty Second Street, South. South Tucson, city of South Tucson, cuz that also encompasses a separate jurisdiction, which is surrounded by the city of Tucson, that's their city of South Tucson. That has its own mayor and council, and then south to the airport. A lot of folks are fearful of gentrification and displacement, you know, rightfully so, because there has been um, you know, a history of that with, with. Downtown and urban renewal, so a lot of that trauma was stemmed up. But this policy recommendation was bringing that to light. It was a E T O D project, Equitable Transit Oriented Development Project, that we as a community can um, make. Recommendations to the city of Tucson of halting or preventing gentrification. One project that I've been working on um, is within the city of South Tucson on historic cultural preservation with the legacy business owners. Specifically, the business owners that own their property down South Fourth Avenue. Um, we gotta start thinking about South Sixth Avenue and how we could prevent and slow down gentrification.
Thank you. And Chris, to you?
Yeah, I think gentrification and displacement are, you know, big concerns for certain parts of our community. At the same time, I don't think we need to shy away from being bold in terms of, you know, developing public infrastructure and public transportation. You know, a lot of times, the people that go to city council meetings to oppose things are the people that have the time and the capacity to do so. Not necessarily the people who would benefit from it. Because a lot of times, the people would benefit from a lot of these projects, from enhanced public transportation, from, you know, more dense housing. Um, are the people that are working two or three jobs and have families and they don't have time to participate in city council meetings or engage with those things. We also need to listen to our communities, though, and make sure we're finding solutions that work for as many people as possible. Um, I like that the city of Tucson has, you know, been moving away from a car-centric approach in some of its long-term planning. Enhancing bike lanes, uh, increasing public transportation, uh, but we have a lot of work to do. Um, you know, I remember filling out uh, one of the forums, and when you run for office, you get lots of, not forums, uh, uh, response questionnaires. You get lots of questionnaires from lots of organizations when you run for office, asking you how you feel about this and that. Um, and the one from Living Streets Alliance asked, um, you know, would we ride our bikes or how would we get to city council meetings? I'm like, well, I would like to ride my bike. Um, you know, the weather, timing, trying to wear a suit, riding a bike in the summer might be a little bit challenging, I don't live too far from downtown. But I'm like, well, how long would it take me from public transportation? Now, it's a twenty-minute, or ten-minute drive, a twenty-minute bike ride from my house to the city hall. It's minimum thirty-five minutes on a bus, anywhere to an hour and seven minutes on a bus. Um, and Google also said I could walk there in an hour and seven minutes. So we need to invest in our public transportation system, not everyone can afford cars, cars are not necessarily the way for our future with individual ownership. I know that's a tough transition for a very individualistic country that has been built on cars for the past, you know, seventy, eighty years. And it's gonna take a long time to change that, but we shouldn't be shy.
Okay, Chris, what would you propose to increase employment opportunities and tax revenues to support development? And if possible, please rank your proposals.
Good question. Um, you know, like I mentioned earlier, I think supporting local small business, local entrepreneurs, um, is something we should lean into. I think one of the problems that we have with a lot of our young people is that they, they don't necessarily have purpose or goals. They don't know what they're gonna do, they don't have a path to opportunity to succeed. So I think we need to lean in a lot to different job trading programs, uh, technical education, skills education. You know, I remember when I was in high school, I was terrible when I was in high school, I didn't get my stride until I went to community college. I actually dropped out of high school cuz I did so poorly. But the class I loved the most in high school was shop class and the graphic design class, cuz it was hands-on, it was things that I could do, I could create something. And for a young man, that resonated more with me. And it wasn't until I got to community college and kind of made my own choices that, you know, education, like, oh, I'm, I'm here for the reasons that I wanna be here. Um, so I think we need to do a lot more supporting our youth and having those kinds of opportunities, supporting those opportunities with our public education system. Collaborating with, you know, Job Corps, with Pima Community College to create some of those things. We also have a phenomenal research, tier-one research institution in the University of Arizona. That spits out all kinds of intellectual properties and ideas. And U of A has not done the best of jobs um, over, you know, historically in terms of commercializing the intellectual property that comes out of all that research. And the university and the public owns that research. Um, but we can do a lot more job and I think partner a lot more effectively with the University of Arizona. To create more of those opportunities, to create more of those startup companies, and really lean into that. Um, and identify opportunities, you know, for technologies of the future, for employment of the future. You know, we need to thinking about the jobs of ten to twenty years from now, not the jobs of yesterday. Uh, and we need to be innovative in how we approach that and, and how we look at our economic development.
Thank you. And Selena, what would you propose?
Well, you know, I, I feel like Tucson, right now, we're doing a lot, um, I see a lot of programs in action, of pipeline programs. So there's a lot of programs with the youth, like J Ted, you know, our, our community college, U of A. I would want to continue to support those programs, um, some that are located here in Ward Five, like our big J Ted program. But also with the new development coming in, we have to make that process easier. So we have to cut a lot of red tape and make that permitting process um, easier for new development coming in. That's what I've heard from a lot of local developers, you know, that um, the process with the planning department, it takes a long time. For them to get going, so that delays, you know, our job growth. Um, I would also encourage local hiring, you know, with any development project happening here in Ward Five, that we must. Um, hire local and they must be good, you know, union-paying jobs. That's something um, that we need to continue to advocate for, livable wages. And also thinking um, creatively, you know, we have a lot of properties here in our Ward Five community. That if we, either we zone them or do some type of overlay district where we could do more um, mixed youths. Mixed youth development projects, so meaning that we could have um, commercial on the bottom, housing on top. So that way, folks can utilize our, our transportation system or walk to work and stay there to sleep. You know, um, create more opportunities around that. And I would just um, also think about supporting our local economy, how we can continue to support them so they're not closing. You know, a lot of our businesses are closing down and, and that is um, that hurts, that hurts our Tucson economy. So rather than shutting down, I want them to grow.
Thank you. And um, continuing with Selena, if elected to Tucson City Council, what would you do to tackle sustainability?
Well, I've been thinking a lot around sustainability, especially in our Ward Five neighborhoods, you know, going back to um, how hot it is. I don't know if you all have had the chance to attend, but the city of Tucson puts on a heat um, forum. And if you look on the map, Heat Island, um, there's a map that shows all our red par, our parcels in Tucson and the reddest are here in Ward Five. So I would like to think creatively of maybe doing like an energy audit for Ward Five, looking at our existing infrastructure. A lot of our homes are older, um, and that means that they can have some updates, some, qualify for some rebate programs. Whether that's, you know, installing some new windows or fluorescent to L E D, green energy lighting. Um, there's some things that we could do to make it more sustainable, but really thinking at a Ward Five level. Like, my goal here as being a city council member would be to flip Ward Five green, you know, to have more trees, more shade. To have our homes have green energy efficient um, interior and exterior. So also um, any new builds have to be sustainable, green infrastructure related, you know, and. And the cost might be high in the, in the front, but long-term, it's gonna really pay off for our, our neighbors. Because our residents deserve a safe, sustainable living situation. And so do our um, you know, our business corridor too. That's something that I've been thinking a lot around uh, private-public partnerships. You know, my husband and I, we all, we're opening up a coffee shop in the city of South Tucson, Luna Isol Cafe. And we have a private-public partnership with Tucson Bird Alliance, where we've given them an unused dirt lot. To create uh, South Tucson's first and only bird-butterfly urban habitat. And uh, that partnership has really flourished. And now that is a community space for the elders, for the children in, in the area to sit down under a shaded tree and be able to breathe clean air.
Thank you. Um, Chris on sustainability?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a variety of ways we can talk about sustainability, um, you know, whether it's terms of building materials, energy, water. So it's, it's a pretty broad topic, but I think, you know, with energy, we need a lot more renewable energy, we need more solar. Um, you know, like I said, I'm shocked that not every house in Tucson doesn't have solar panels. So I think we should lean heavily into making sure that we have the solar panels on as many homes as possible. Um, supporting that in the community, maybe we can do some kind of, you know, public-private partnership. Uh, to facilitate or support homeowners who might not otherwise be able to afford um, solar panels on their roof. Um, having a distributed grid is much more resilient and adaptable to climate change. Um, I think we do a pretty good job with water um, in the city. Somebody, it was a water presentation a few years ago that, you know, we use about the same per capita water today in Arizona. Um, as we did sixty years ago, and we have like ten million more people living in the state. Um, Tucson has, you know, several years' worth of water banks in our aquifers north of town. I was happy to see that, um, it sounds like they might finally um, allocate river water from the Colorado coming through the Central Arizona project. Based on what's actually there, not a hundred-year-old projection that was over-allocated from the start. Um, but we should lean more into rainwater harvesting. Um, if I remember correctly, Tucson, you know, gets enough rain per square footage, and if we harvested it all, it would almost meet our, you know, residential water needs. Um, but we don't do enough with rainwater harvesting. I think, you know, we could do better with recycling programs. Um, I like the idea that we had with the Bi-Fusion Partnership and what's going on in Los Rialos to make sure um, that we have, you know, sustainable building materials. I think we could do a lot more with that. Um, and in Ward Five, you know, we have a horrible shade equity problem. There are a lot fewer trees, it's a lot harder, a lot hotter in Ward Five. Uh, and so we need to continue working um, towards that problem and making sure that we're supporting, you know, green coverage and shade. Uh, in the communities that need it, including Ward Five.
Thank you, Chris. And uh, sticking with you, do you support the city's intention to weaken our zoning code and apply middle housing regulations to the entire city? Explain why or why not?
Yes.
Explain why or why not?
Um, we need more housing, um, we have underbuilt housing for the past forty years. One of the biggest contributors to the homeless and unhoused population is not having enough houses. Um, I know lots of people my age and younger that, you know, are struggling to find a starter home, to just get started with their families. Um, to build a house or to have a house where they can start their family. And I'm talking about people with, you know, dual incomes that both have master's degrees, struggle to find affordable housing in this community. I can only imagine how much more challenging it is for working families or single parents. Um, it's outrageous that, um, remember there were some numbers out not too long ago? That a single parent with two kids, um, making the median wage cannot afford a place to live in like all but two counties in the entirety of the United States. Housing is a right, we all need shelter, we need to build more housing. Um, and I know there are some people in neighborhoods that don't like higher-density housing because they think it's going to increase traffic. Or it's going to obstruct their view or bring in whatever numbers of issues. And if we only listen to those voices, we're not gonna get anything done as a community, we're not gonna solve the problem. We're not hearing the people who would benefit from that housing and who need that housing. Um, and so I think investing in higher-density public housing along our pu, public transportation corridors next to existing resources. Um, is one of the best ways that we can sustainably increase our housing supply and make Tucson more sustainable. I don't think we should be chasing houses out into the desert and continuing to expand our footprint forever um, out into the wilderness. Uh, that overtaxes our resources, it emphasizes cars, um, and it's housing for people that don't necessarily have a problem finding housing. Uh, one last thing I would have, we do have a lot of houses in Tucson, most of them are not affordable for the people who need them. So we could also look at cooperative housing agreements and supporting um, partnerships for a variety of young people or people to buy houses, not just married folks.
Okay, Selena?
Yes, you know, housing is a, a human right, it's something that is a necessity. Um, I can't believe how high our housing costs have gone up. You know, as somebody born and raised here, I've never thought I'd see the day of some of these half a million houses in the locations where they're at. You know, and then I get frustrated when I hear folks coming outside from other states. Saying that it's reasonable and it's cheap for them because their housing costs are um, you know, hi, way higher than ours. But we need to really think about our um, our current situation. You know, how can we make housing an option for folks like myself that grew up in this area? Want to return back and invest here in Ward Five, rather than moving far outside the city limits and, and sprawling out in the county. Um, so we have to think of some incentives and we have to, again, start thinking creative of some programs, whether that's workforce housing. You know, having our um, teachers, our educators live within Ward Five so they could walk to their school site. Or other public servants can stay there. Um, we need to start going back to what I stated earlier about Ward Five. We have um, the second-most homeowners in all of the six wards. I believe um, Ward Four has the most homeowners, but I need to double-check that. But Ward Five has a lot of homeowners, so that tells me that we need to start talking to those current existing homeowners and having a plan of action. So those houses don't um, flip, you know. We also need to think about our folks that um, are taking advantage, you know, a lot of slum lords and how we could hold them accountable too. Um, I think we need to support a lot of the existing programs, if that's like an A D U program or if it's some type of infill development project. And um, there's my time.
Okay, thank you. All right, switching gears, uh, Selena, the city recently passed an ordinance that criminalizes sleeping in washes year-round. How would you have voted if you had been on the council and um, what solutions might you have to address that situation?
Yeah, I think about um, our unhoused population, our neighbors all the time. You know, I live down the street from Santa Rita Park, I'm a Barrio Santa Rita resident. And I've gotten to know a lot of folks like Victoria, Jessica, Diablo, London, Leroy. You know, and I have these conversations of how the city can support. Um, it's a tough situation because I do see there's a lot of gaps, you know, there is a lot of gaps in our current situation. Um, I don't feel like it's safe for them to be outside in this heat. You know, we're gonna probably experience a flood in a week. And I wouldn't want anyone, God forbid, die or somebody get hurt and that be on our city. Um, so we need to have a plan, a plan of action of how we can help get folks inside shelter. You know, just the other week, I was having a conversation with somebody on the corner of Twenty Second and Park. And I was asking her, what are your barriers, why don't you wanna go to some of these existing programs? And she was kind of breaking it down of why she's not attending these programs. And then I spoke to somebody on the corner of, you know, another street, and they shared um, their issues, and they weren't the same. So this isn't gonna be a one-box-fix-all solution. So we really have to work with our partners, we might have to create new partners, partnerships, we're gonna have to um, think outside the box. We're also gonna have to look at other models, other cities that are doing um, innovative programming and that are, that have a high success rate. You know, ultimately, I want our folks to have shelter, but also have um, a transformation period where they could have a. where they could have a job, you know, finish their education. And if they're not at that point, get them some mental health services, some drug addiction services. But by leaving folks in our streets and moving them around, that's not, that's not a sustainable solution for our community.
Okay, thank you. Chris, how, how would you have voted? And how would you address the issue?
I don't think I would have supported the ordinance that the city passed. Ostensibly, it was, you know, preemptive to deal with property tax claims associated with Proposition 312. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't understand how creating more ordinances lessens our liability from not enforcing ordinances and creating additional ordinances and things like that that we don't have the resources or capacity to enforce is going to shield us from claims from 312. It seems like it would open us up more. But again, I'm not a lawyer, so maybe there's something I'm missing in that calculation. You know, as I mentioned earlier, homelessness is a complicated subject. Not everyone is homeless for the same reason. I think we have, you know, people who are elders in our community or living on fixed incomes, that their rent goes up or their insurance goes up or their property taxes go up. They don't have any slack of their income, and they get forced out. That's not fair. That's not right. I think we have working families that, you know, a car breaks down, miss, you know, or illness, you know, hits the family and, you know, somebody can't go to their job. You miss a paycheck, then you miss a rent payment, then you're evicted, and then you're out on the street. And once you have an eviction, it's really hard to get housing again. So for people in these kinds of situations, I think we need to be more proactive in intervention. So looking at, you know, can we freeze property taxes for seniors on fixed incomes? Can we have, you know, arrangements or enforcement so that landlords can't arbitrarily raise rents to a crazy amount for people, seniors, living in their, you know, facility? You know, for working families, maybe giving them a month or two of rent support to keep them in the house so they don't have additional problems when they go out or if they're forced out of their housing. So I think intervention is the way to go for a lot of those issues, for, you know, people dealing with addiction rehabilitation issues. I think we need to be out there a lot more, working with our community partners and some of our fantastic nonprofit organizations to address that problem.
Okay, and we are down next to the last question? This is the last question. This last question is from a future voter. How do you think your actions will affect not only Ward Five, but the future generations?
You know, I think about this a lot, probably because I'm a dad and I have a six-year-old and a nine-year-old. What do I want the future of Tucson to look like for them? What do I do as a father? How do I portray myself in the community, you know, with my actions to set a good role model for them? It's one of the reasons I wanted to run for office, because I want my kids to know that it's important to be engaged, to show up, to, to listen to people in the community, to try to solve problems. I think our kids, you know, their future is not at all clear, and that terrifies the heck out of me as a parent. You know, with climate change, with technology, with the future of our democracy, there's a lot of stuff up in the air right now. And it's a hard time to have children and think about the future. But I think we, as parents, we as a community, need to give them every opportunity possible. You know, as a father, like I said, I try to set a good example, to be engaged, to show up, to listen. And I think we need to do more to support our kids in navigating ways into the future. Their future is not gonna look like today. Technology is gonna change things a lot. Social media has already changed things a lot. How people engage, get information, has changed a lot. And there's a big generational divide. I'm an old millennial, so I kind of remember the before times when, you know, the computer was something you had to go into the other room and access before everyone had a smartphone in their hand. And it scares the crap out of me when I see girls in my, you know, or, you know, my daughter's other third-grade class that have cellphones already. I'm like, why would you put that in their hands? I think we need to be more proactive in supporting our youth and making sure that they are not being exploited by big technology companies, among other things. But we really need to lean into education and investment in, you know, our children's future. Because if we don't, that's, I don't know what hope we have.
Thank you. Selena?
Yeah, you know, everything I do, I think about the future and the legacy that I want to leave behind, not just for my daughters, but for my great-great-great-grandchildren. I want my story to be something that they're proud of. And I feel like right now, we are living very uncertain times. And with that, I'm working really hard as somebody that is campaigning every day and talking to folks every day. It's important for me to get to know our residents, you know. Our children aren't gonna have the same experiences that we all had. They're not having the same conversations. So my goal is to get our youth, our elders, everybody, out of their home so they could get to know who their neighbor is across the street, next door. You know, kind of going back to basics of getting to know your neighbor. You know, and that's something that I want to install in our office of getting to know each other. A lot of our neighbors don't know what ward they live in or what neighborhood they live in or who's living right next door to them when I'm knocking on doors. So something that I want to leave behind for our youth is for them to get to know each other, get to know the stories of our community, the history of this land. You know, these stories have to be documented and archived for our youth so they know the struggles that our ancestors helped, that they worked hard for us to be in these situations. So I'm gonna do a lot around education, a lot around mentorship, and a lot around storytelling and documenting because our youth are, they're our future. You know, my hope is that in eight years from now, maybe four years from now, our Ward Five, we're gonna have the most amount of registered voters and the most amount of folks that are gonna go out and vote. Our Ward Five, we have the least amount of registered voters right now and the least amount that go out and vote. So I am relying a lot on our youth to go out strong.
Thank you. Okay, time for closing remarks. Two minutes, as everything else has been. So Chris, let's start with you this time.
All right, thank you. You know, I think there's probably a lot more that my fellow candidates and I agree upon than we disagree upon. And so I want to take just a moment to share, I think, what makes me a little bit different. I don't owe anything to anyone in power. You know, I'm not the chosen candidate of the mayor, of the council, of many of our Democratic officials in the Democratic Party here in Tucson. I'm not endorsed by the incumbents. I'm not bankrolled by wealthy donors. I am not here as a representative of any of those powers. I'm an independent voice here to serve you. Now, I'm committed to listening to our community and assuring that your concerns are represented because ultimately, that is what will make our community better. And that's what it's really all about. A better future for your kids, for my kids, your grandkids, for all of Tucson's families. And I think we're all a little scared and frustrated with what's happening in our nation right now. As I said, there's a lot of uncertainty, and none of us really knows what's gonna happen in the coming years, much less the coming months. But that's why it's so important that we come together as a community to build mutual understanding and respect, to support each other. Because that may be the only way that we get through this. And so I look forward to working with everyone here tonight to build a brighter future for our community.